With that, we'll call the Municipal Planning Commission meeting for April 9th, 2019 to order. These meetings may be recorded and posted on the Wheatland County website or social media. Looking for an adoption of agenda if there's any additions. Seeing none. Jay Smooths, all in favor? It's carried. Looking for adoption of minutes from March 12th, 2019. Any errors or omissions?
I'll move the adoption of minutes.
Mr. Ickert moves, all in favor? That's carried. We'll move on to development permit applications, file number DP 2019-009, for a clay storage facility.
Good morning. We have development permit DP 2019-009. The purpose of this application is for a clay storage facility and the location is northwest 102426, plan number 1611511, block 5, lot 7. So, the recommendation is that the Municipal Planning Commission choose option number one to approve DP 2019-009 for industrial medium, a clay storage facility subject to conditions noted in Appendix A of the development permit report. I'm just going to skip to that if I could. I'm going to give some details of the proposal. The development permit application is for a clay storage facility where material is trucked and stored on-site. The material is made up of clay, blue clay, and sandstone and mudstone excavation tailings obtained from construction sites. The proposal states the material is not contaminated nor hazardous and will be required to pass all testing as industrial fill prior to being loaded at the site of excavation. The material will be hauled by gravel truck with an anticipated average of four to six trips per day. Some months may be busier than others. Hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. seven days a week. There are no dedicated full-time employees on-site, however, there will be workers on-site from time to time. The material will be trucked to the site and deposited into an engineered clay-based storage pad with an evaporation pond for any runoff from the pad. The average capacity of the facility is 2,000 meters cubed to 3,000 meters cubed with a material turnover rate of 60 to 90 days. The capacity could vary at times. Once the material has been dried, it is trucked off-site. This facility will be regulated by Alberta Environment and Parks. The entrance to the site will be landscaped and a grass berm will surround the front and sides of the parcel. No hazardous material will be on-site. No hydrovac activity will be taking place at this site. No odors or dust are anticipated at this site. The parcel will be utilizing the storm water system that was approved at the subdivision stage. A E M P considers this facility a waste storage site as per Schedule 3B of the Activities Designation Regulation. Alberta Environment and Parks do not consider this facility hazardous. However, this facility is required to follow the setbacks set out in the subdivision and development regulations for a waste site. Currently, the facility meets the 300 meters from a residence and a variance is not needed. However, in the future, if a residence was to be proposed within the 300-meter setback to the facility, the county would be required to apply to the Deputy Minister of Environment for a variance to the setback if the county accepted the application for the residence. According to discussions that I've had with A E M P, they mentioned that if the facility was to start to do any reuse or recycling of the materials, the facility will be reclassified as a waste management facility. And if this is the case, the facility would no longer fit in the industrial general district as per our current land use bylaw. This facility would fall under the waste management facility minor definition and this use is not currently permitted in the industrial general district unless an amendment to the land use bylaw occurred. So, I'll get to all of that. So, the relevant policies. Currently, it is located in the CMRB area and under Section 4.1 of the interim regional evaluation framework, which provides criteria the municipality may use to determine what types of documents must be submitted to the board. This application does not meet the criteria for necessitating a CMRB review. Under Section 3.7 of the MDP, Commercial and Industrial Development objectives places an emphasis on locating commercial and industrial parcels within certain designated areas of the counties such as the West Highway 1 area structure plan or in close proximity to hamlets, and this is located within the WASP. Our land use bylaw, the proposal has a land use designation of industrial general and this application meets the requirements of the land use bylaw. It is industrial medium as a discretionary use and the definition of industrial medium means the use of land, buildings, and/or structures for an industrial activity that creates adverse impacts beyond the boundaries of the site for which the associated activity takes place due to appearance. Emissions of contaminants, noise, traffic volume, odors, fire, explosive hazards, or dangerous goods characteristics of industrial medium may include light to moderate open storage, may have a retail or wholesale component that is subordinate to the principal use. Moderate nuisance factors may extend past boundaries of the site. Moderate hazardous industry. West Highway 1 area structure plan, the WASP is identified as a key industrial corridor along Highway 1 within Wheatland County. Section 2.2 objective of the WASP is to accommodate development opportunities in Wheatland County for light to medium industrial and compatible commercial land uses. This application complies within the policies of the WASP and is compatible with other industrial general uses already located in the ASP area. And under the subdivision and development regulation under Section 134, distance from a landfill waste site, subject to subsection 5, a subdivision authority shall not approve an application for subdivision and a development authority shall not issue a permit for the purposes of developing a landfill hazardous waste management facility or storage site unless the working area of a storage site is situated at least 300 meters from the property line of a school, hospital, food establishment, or residential use or building site proposed for a school, hospital, food establishment, or residence. And I do have a map in this package to show that it is further away than the setback. So, we did do circulation to our agencies and Alberta Transportation did provide two separate comments. The first one was that it does not appear to be in proximity to a provincial highway. And then they said Highway 1 being the closest highway to this location would not be impacted by the proposed development. And then after I circulated a second time, a response back in March said that no requirements or concerns with this proposal. So, I took that as their final comments. Alberta Environment and Parks, they do not have any questions for now, but once the company obtains all required permits, I will make a site visit and inspect the clay and liner system. The department has requested for a QA QC report on the liner system once it's built. This facility will be classified as a waste storage site for now to get the operations going. If any reuse or recycling takes place in the future, the facility will be classified as a waste management facility. We did internal circulation. The deputy fire chief had no concerns. Manager of Community Services ensured that the landscaping is constructed from approved landscape plan. GM of Transportation and Agriculture comments, it appears that the site plan has been modified to direct surface runoff away from the clay storage and evaporation pond. This eliminates concerns of surface water runoff inundating the storage pond and he would like to see the applicant enter into an annual road use agreement with the county rather than place a specified dust abatement condition on the approval. A road use agreement allows the county to implement the requirement to apply dust control in the future if the traffic increases or there are nuisance effects off-site. I did receive a circulation notice from two neighbors and those are included in the package. Some options for MPC to consider. Option one, that the Municipal Planning Commission approved development permit 2019-009, industrial medium, a clay storage facility, subject to conditions noted in Appendix A, based on the following, that the development authority has determined that the proposed clay storage site complies with the county's land use bylaw rules and regulations. Option two is to refuse the application with reasons given. Option three is to provide an alternative recommendation of MPC's choosing. So, it's the recommendation that Municipal Planning Commission choose option one to approve the development permit, based on the following, that the proposed application aligns with the MDP, the proposed application aligns with the prescribed use of the industrial general district as per the land use bylaw, the proposed clay storage facility fits with the contents of the area which is located within the WASP. Appendix A, which is the conditions of the proposal, the development permit is issued solely for the purpose of a clay storage facility defined as industrial medium. No variance has been granted. Development shall proceed according to the IG district and must meet all provisions of the land use bylaw. No permanent development shall occur on or over any utility right-of-way or easement. Applicant to ensure approach is developed to county standards. Applicant to provide off-site levies in the amount of $9,075.58 per acre prior to construction occurring. Applicant to enter into and abide by a landscape development agreement and to provide securities in the amount of 125% as per the approved landscape plan prior to any construction occurring. Applicant to submit to the county correspondence from Alberta Environment and Parks for approval of the facility prior to operation of the site. Applicant to enter into and abide by a road use agreement. Business to remain consistent with the application details and letter of intent. And then we have our two notes, that construction shall conform to Alberta Safety Code regulations if there's anything that needs to be constructed and development shall meet all provincial and federal legislation. This is the location plan. So, we have Cheadle down here with Highway 24 and Highway 1. And this is the area here. You may recall that in these two lots right here, this is where the affordable RV storage This is the site plan. So, here is the access point around the sides. Over here is where the berm is. This is all gravelled. This is the evaporation pond and this is the storage area where the clay will be deposited and the water would run into this evaporation pond. Back here is the overland drainage where the storm water system is. This is the landscape plan up here where the trees will be and then, of course, the grass berm on the sides. CMRB plan, this is the area of the proposal. Here's an aerial photo of the location right here. This is the RV storage over here. These stars indicate the location of the circulation responses I got from the adjacent I did go out and do site inspection. There's nothing going on currently and it was a little snowy that day, so it was about a month or so ago. Nothing happening. Nothing to really see. Circulation map, highlighted orange area, everybody who would have been circulated. These are the two notices that I received by email. Did you want me to read those out, Mr. Chairman?
I don't believe so.
This is the circulation, or not circulation, this is the setback map showing, sorry, it's not very clear. This is the 300-meter setback from the location of the parcel showing that there are no residences within the 300-meter setback. However, the 450-meter setback, it does show a residence in there, just to kind of show that there is a possibility that if something larger were to come in like a school or something like that, but I can't see that happening in an industrial area. So, that's just to give some kind of perspective there. And that's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, discussion?
Through the chair, just a question for my own and it may be a silly question, but the comments that Alberta Environment made have me wondering when this is being applied for as a clay storage site and yet they made comments in there that if the use changed, then they would just change it to a waste management and recycle site. Is that not similar to the problem we're going through with another site in this county where they just decided to come in and change it from what the original intent of it was? Is this direct control or is this going to be left up to Environment to make that decision down the road?
I have similar concerns with that. So, yeah, I guess the question is, can they, if we give the use here, can they change what they can do there without coming back to us? Can anybody answer that? Go ahead.
So, they have to comply with their application and their letter of intent and currently they cannot reuse any of the materials that they're drawing. So, I did ask that question. And the material that they're drawing can only really be used for a cap for landfills as a layer to cap over landfills. It can't be used for any type of recycled material. So, it can't be placed back for residential or commercial type fill. However, if Alberta Environment were to come back and say that they can start using it as recyclable material, which they can't do right now, and Alberta Environment is not approving those type of recyclable materials once it's taken out from construction sites, if they were to ever say, yes, you can use it as recyclable material, they'd have to reclassify it as a new material, but they're not doing that right now. So, currently, they can't. So, until that happens, they can't, they can't do that. So, they would have to come back to the county to reapply for something like that. Does that make sense? Does that help?
To a point, so this is not a direct control application?
This application is currently zoned industrial general and they're applying for medium industrial.
Through the chair. The difference between this and another site you may be thinking of is the other site never had a development permit. So, we couldn't, we had nothing to hold it to. This one will have a development permit.
And in the conditions of this current development permit, it specifically states that it is just for a storage facility at this time. So, it would have to come for a new development permit if the use was going to change, just to confirm.
I'm hoping my concerns have been addressed because it wasn't, the intent of these things always starts out one way and ends up another and that's where I think everybody's worried about. What other measures could we put in place to ensure that won't happen? Is there anything else we can do? Other than refusing it?
Just a question on Appendix A. Applicant to submit to the county correspondence from Alberta Environment. I know there's a cat on-site right now moving clay around, like, because that site is visible from the number one highway. So, they've gone, they're working on that clay bed, so it's like, is number eight even like, yeah. According to your statement, you have not heard back from them, yet they are working on that site as we speak.
So, I did speak with the owner a couple of weeks ago and the site has a huge dip in the middle. So, they wanted to bring in some dirt to kind of level it out. So, I did say that they could bring some dirt in. They could not work on the actual clay pad. So, even if they didn't get approval, the site still could use some leveling to help with the drainage for water to go to the back of the storm, to the storm, engineered storm water system. So, I did allow them to bring in some loads of dirt for that.
Okay, and just, sorry. The Transportation GM wants to see an annual road use agreement. I'm thinking that because it's 3,600 feet from the TransCanada Highway to the entrance of the, ah, yes, I drove it, to the entrance of their deal, I'm thinking that we should, even before we do anything, that we should, there should be a dust control, like, because this is going to be, I mean, that road that is going to be causing problems, visibility problems as they come onto the TransCanada Highway and then there's a subroad that goes east-west that is, you know, it's going to create a whole bunch of dust for the people that live there and all those storage units and all that kind of stuff. So, I'm just trying to figure out if instead of using the road use agreement, that maybe we should just go straight, straight to dust control on that one, so.
I did ask Mike about that and he says the road use agreement does have dust control abatement inside that road use agreement. So, if they did need to put on dust control, it is inserted in the road use agreement for them to use that.
It's my understanding that the road use agreement gives staff more control than what we could put in place, so hopefully that answers. Go ahead, Glenn.
Past experience, if you want to develop, if you want to control what's happening on a property, give it a development permit. It gives the county control of what happens and if this, we have a letter of intent, they can't veer from that without coming back in here. If you want to lose control, don't give them a development permit and you have nothing back to go back on. Development permits are key to everything.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? We have a couple of options to do here. MPC wish to put forward.
I'll move that MPC choose option one to approve development permit 2019-009 for clay storage facility, subject to conditions in Appendix A.
Thank you, Mr. Ickert. Any discussion on the motion? Call a question, all in favor? That's passed. Thank you. We'll move on to file number DP 2019-014, hazardous industry fireworks storage and handling facility.
Just wanted to declare that I'm abstaining on this matter because of family pecuniary interest in the company. I'm leaving the room and ask that my abstention be recorded.
Thank you.
So, we have development permit 2019-014. The purpose of this application is to present a proposed fireworks storage and handling facility. The recommendation is that the Municipal Planning Commission choose option one to approve DP 2019-014 for hazardous industry for fireworks storage and handling facility subject to conditions noted in Appendix A of the development permit report. Going to scooch down there. The development permit application is for fireworks storage and handling facility. The proposed business stores and handles fireworks and/or pyrotechnic articles. The amount of product held in storage, processed for picking, or held in transit are governed by the limits set out by Natural Resource Canada's Explosives Regulatory Division, or the ERD. Services performed at the facility include shipping and receiving, inventory, storage, and repackaging of fireworks from manufacturers wholesale packaging into smaller retail transport boxes. Destruction of fireworks occurs on a separate parcel within Wheatland County. A new transit building is being proposed to receive in-transit product. It will also house the office, washroom facilities, and lunchroom for workers. The picking and storage of product will be done in C containers. There will be up to 26 C containers utilized for this proposal. There is no outdoor storage proposed. No retail sales are proposed at this site. Traffic will consist of staff vehicles and truck delivery, which is averaging once per week. The applicant has provided an emergency response plan, picking procedures, security plan, fire safety plan, and a disposal procedures plan. All have been reviewed by Wheatland County Deputy Fire Chief. This site will be regulated by the Natural Resource Canada Explosives Regulatory Division. Some relevant policies. The municipal development plan does not address objectives or policies for intensive industrial lands. The land use bylaw, the proposal has a land use designation of industrial, intensive industrial. Hazardous industry is a discretionary use in the intensive industrial district. Hazardous industry means an operation where the product or the means or materials used in the manufacturing and/or storage or distribution of a product have an elevated risk level due to combustibility, health hazards, potential for environmental contamination, or other risk factors. This includes, but may not be limited to, the following, bulk oil plants, This includes, but may not be limited to, the following: bulk oil plants, cement plants, bulk fuel, fertilizer, and building materials, explosive or combustible material plants, ammonia storage. Circulation was done, Lynx Energy. They accept this email as confirmation that you were able to construct surface improvements and above-ground structures up to the boundary of the existing Lynx surface lease boundary. Internal circulation was done, the GM of Transportation and Agriculture. I do not have any concerns with the traffic proposed for the site. It is minimal and would not be detrimental to our road network. The submitted drainage plan is sufficient to address the flow of stormwater in the area, and the minimal development on the lands do not appear to alter the drainage to the measurable extent. It appears that a new approach would need to be constructed to county standards. The development officer, the uses classifies, classified as a hazardous industry. The property is bordered by a drainage course, and from the aerial photo appears to have water potholes consistently visible on the property. Standing water and runoff could damage the storage containers and/or wash hazardous materials into the water course. Since there is no stormwater management plan in place, the applicant should be diligent in ensuring no hazardous materials end up in the drainage course or groundwater. There were no responses from any neighborhood circulation. So the options, staff proposed the following three possible options for the municipal planning commission. Option one, that the municipal planning commission approve DP 2019-014 hazardous industry of fireworks storage and handling facility, subject to conditions noted in Appendix A of the development permit report based on the following: the development authority has determined that the proposed fireworks storage and handling facility complies with the county's land use bylaw rules and regulations. Option two, to refuse the application with reasons given. Option three, to provide an alternative recommendation of MPC's choosing. It's the recommendation that the MPC choose option one to approve the development permit 2019-04 hazardous industry of fireworks storage and handling facility, based on the following: that the proposed application aligns with the prescribed uses of the intensive industrial district as per the land use bylaw. Appendix A, these are the conditions that are being proposed. This development permit is issued solely for the purpose of a fireworks storage and handling facility defined as hazardous industry. No variance has been granted. Development shall proceed according to intensive industrial district and must comply with all provisions of the land use bylaw. No permanent development shall occur on or over any utility right-of-way or easement. Applicant to ensure approach is developed to county standards. Applicant to submit to the county correspondence from the ERD for approval of the facility prior to operation of the site. Applicant to abide by the drainage plans submitted with the development permit application. Business to remain consistent with the application details and letter of intent. And then we have our two standard notes. The location is this parcel here. This is Township Road 254, Range Road 232. We have Range Road 233, and Township 252. It's very secluded over there. Site plan, sorry, this is a little hard to see. It's right over here. This is the area. Going to get a little closer. So you may remember this application. This area here was spot zoned to intensive industrial. This is the location over here where the transit building is going to be, and some of the C cans. So it's not this whole quarter section, it's just this area over here. This is the circulation map highlighted in orange. And that is everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
If there's no questions, I'll move the recommendation that MPC choose option one to approve DP 2019-04, 014, pardon me, for hazardous industrial for fireworks storage and handling facility subject to the conditions noted in Appendix A of the DP report.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Any question on the motion? And then, call a question? All in favor? We'll move on to development permit application DP 219-025 for a dwelling accessory. Whenever you're ready, Suzanne.
So this application is located about three miles southwest of Strathmore, in the southwest 32425, Plan 9511739 Block 2. The recommendation is that MPC choose option one to approve the DP 2019-25, a dwelling accessory, subject to conditions noted in Appendix A of the development permit report that I will outline for you. So this property is a 6.43 acre property, zone country residential. A new primary residence is being constructed on the parcel, which received a DP in 2018. As a condition of approval for the new residence, the applicant signed an agreement indicating the existing modular home would either be removed or a permit would be obtained which would allow it to remain. This application has been made to allow the landowner to keep the existing modular dwelling on the property as a dwelling accessory. The proposal meets all of the requirements of the land use bylaw. No variances have been requested. The proposed dwelling accessory is 1,700 square feet, and the primary residence is 6,450 square feet, including the attached garage. It has a separate well and septic system from the primary residence. The quarter section where this property is located has no residences on it, except for two, which are on the subject parcel. So some policy review. It is located within the CMRV plan area, but does not meet the criteria, criteria for necessitating a review. Area structure plans, it is located in an area that has multiple ASPs, however, it is located outside the boundaries of all of them. The municipal development plan, the proposed dwelling accessory aligns with Section 3.6.1 of the MDP. It's, it ensures Wheatland residents have an access to a range of affordable housing types and a diversity of housing choices to accommodate all stages of life. Land use bylaw, the proposal has land use designation of country residential, and this application meets all the requirements of the CR district and all of the mandatory requirements of the dwelling accessory section. Section 8.6.5C has, lists additional considerations that the development authority can consider when, when considering a dwelling accessory application. And it says that it, consideration will be given to applications which are similar in architectural design, character, and appearance to the dwelling primary. The proposed dwelling accessory is similar in the roof and trim color, and neither dwelling has a second story. It is not similar in the respect that the color of the two dwellings are in contrast to one another, as I'll show you in the pictures coming up. So there we have it, as a discretionary use in our CR district. Here's our definitions for dwelling accessory and dwelling primary, and all of the mandatory provisions of the bylaw section. And here is the one that's in additional considerations, the similarity of the dwelling accessory to the principal dwelling or adjacent properties in architectural design, character, and appearance. So we'll get down to the photos in a moment. So an agency circulation was not performed. Internal file review, development officer comments, requested clarification regarding the letter of intent submitted for the subdivision currently in process on the same parcel, which indicated that the dwelling would be moved to the proposed subdivided parcel. We advise that the applicant had changed their mind and may move the dwelling accessory to the new parcel in the future if it's approved. Staff are proposing the following three options for MPC to consider. That municipal planning commission approve DP 2019-025 dwelling accessory, subject to conditions noted in Appendix A of the development permit report, and that with the stated conditions of approval, the development authority has determined that the proposed dwelling accessory complies with the county's land use bylaw and regulations. Option two, that MPC refuse the application with reasons. Or option three, that MPC provide an alternative recommend, recommendation of MPC's choosing. Staff are recommending option one to approve DP 2019-025, subject to conditions noted in Appendix A of the development permit report based on the following: the proposed dwelling aligns with 3.61 of the MDP. The proposed application aligns the prescribed uses of the country residential district and all mandatory provisions of the dwelling accessory section of the LUB. The dwelling accessory fits within the context of the area, which is primarily residential and agriculture in nature, agricultural in nature. So the proposed conditions are: this DP is issued for the purpose of allowing an existing dwelling modular to remain as a second residence, defined as a dwelling accessory. No variances have been granted. Development shall proceed according to CR district requirements. No permanent development shall occur on or over any utility right-of-way or easement. An applicant to ensure approach is developed to county standards. So here is our location plan. There is the town of Strathmore, so we're southwest of Strathmore. Here's the site plan. So here's the exist, existing dwelling, dwelling, which is proposed for dwelling accessory. Here is their new house that's almost fully constructed at this point. They are 116 feet apart. Here's all the ASPs in the area. There are several, and this one just falls outside of them all. Here's the CMRV area, and where the parcel is located. Here was our circulation area. An aerial photo, so this was taken prior to construction of that primary. And here's the proposed dwelling accessory right here. Just, just to context with an aerial photo of the area. So this is the dwelling accessory, white with a black roof. This is the backside of it. And then the primary, we debated about the color. We said it was dark green, dark brown, possibly black. We couldn't really pinpoint it. But, so here they are on the property, dwelling accessory. There's this shop that's kind of further back, and then here is the primary. And that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know staff has had the, pointed out the additional considerations that we can deal with at MPC, and I believe there's some merit there. Just have some discussion on that as well.
I, being with the additional considerations, I'll just say what I need to say here. They are different in color, and being, I've driven by the site a few times and seen it. And I do believe that the person will actually make it look similar, because they put a lot of money there. But if we want to put any, we have a chance to make sure that happens, whether we so
MPC's wishes. We have three in front of us.
I'll move that MPC choose option one to approve development permit 2019-025, a dwelling accessory, subject to conditions noted in Appendix A.
Any discussion on the motion? Lights on, lights off? Do you want to speak? All right, I'll call a question. All in favor? We'll move on to file number 219-031 for a nursery.
Application is 2.49 miles southwest of Strathmore, in the southeast 282325. It is the recommendation of staff that municipal planning commission choose option one to approve DP 2019-31 for a nursery, subject to conditions noted in Appendix A of the development permit report, which I will outline. So this parcel is 143.5 acres, zoned ag general. Some details of the proposal is, the applicants have been operating a wholesale tree farm on the property, which is defined as an agricultural operation, according to our current land use bylaw. This application has been made in order to expand the wholesale business to include a retail component. This expansion changes the use from an ag operation to a nursery as per the following definition. Nursery means the growing of trees, shrubs, or other plants, not fruit or vegetables, for commercial purposes. This use includes an area for the display and sale of goods or product grown or raised on-site. The proposal will use the existing tree farm operation and the buildings currently on-site for indoor storage, as well as the existing office building. The proposal also includes the placement of a 20 by 40 seasonal modular shade structure to be used to house trees in pots, shrubs, and other similar flora. Other items which will be offered for sale would include typical gardening products to complement the sale of the trees. The applicant is aware that any building or structures where public will be visiting will need to adhere to safety code requirements for a commercial building. Deliveries to the site are two per week, anticipated customers 18 to 30 per week, and an additional 2.5 seasonal employees will be needed, for a total of 14.5 employees. Hours of operation will be Tuesday through Sunday, 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., with a tentative season of May 11th to September 30th, welling, or weather permitting. The proposal is located on a paved road, Glenmore Trail. CMRV, or relevant policy or legislation, the CMRV, it is located within the CMRV area, but it does not meet the requirements for necessitating a review. The subject parcel is located outside of any ASP boundaries. Municipal development plan. The proposed nursery aligns with Section 3.1, that ensuring that agriculture remains a strong basis of Wheatland County, and by minimizing the fragmentation of an effect on agricultural lands. 3.7 of the MDP's commercial and industrial development policies state that the county shall encourage the inclusion of value-added operations and accessory uses in the consideration of agricultural land use applications. Land use bylaw, the proposal has a land use designation of ag general, and this application meets the requirements of the AG district. So there we have it. It is a discretionary use in ag general. Circulation, agency circulation not performed, internal file review, there was no concerns. Neighbors within one mile, no responses, no concerns. Staff are proposing the possible three options for MPC to consider. That MPC approve DP 2019-031 a nursery, subject to conditions noted in Appendix A, and that with the stated conditions of approval, the development authority has determined that the proposed nursery complies with the county's land use bylaw rules and regulations. Option two, that MPC refuse the application with reasons. Option three, that MPC provide an alternative recommendation. It is the recommendation of staff that MPC choose option one to approve DP 2019-031 for a nursery, subject to conditions noted in Appendix A of the development permit report based on the following: the proposed nursery aligns with 3.11 and 3.72 of the MDP. The proposed nursery aligns with the prescribed uses for the AG district and all other provisions of the LUB. The tree farm is currently operating on-site, and no new operations or processes have been proposed relating to the farming operations. The proposed parcel is located on a paved road. No concerns have been raised with regards to the additional traffic. This development permit is issued solely for the purpose of changing the use on the land from a wholesale tree farm to a retail tree nursery, defined as a nursery. No variances have been granted. Development shall proceed according to ag general requirements. No permanent development shall- No permanent development shall occur on or over any utility right-of-way easement. Applicant to ensure his approach is developed to county standards. And business to remain consistent with submitted application, letter of intent, and approved plans. So here we have a location plan, southwest of Strathmore, along Glenmore Trail. And this is the site plan, so this is very small, just showing, it says the detail. They just wanted to add the detail of this temporary structure that they're going to have in the summer, which does meet the setback from the county road. This is an aerial photo. This is all trees. And here is the existing office, existing parking area here, large parking area, and this is the new structure. Here it is within the CMRV plan area. There was circulation area, and that is the existing office. That's everything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's any questions? If not, we have three options in front of us.
I'll move that MPC choose option one to approve DP 2019-031 for a nursery, subject to the conditions noted in Appendix A of the DP report.
Any questions or discussions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? We'll move on to subdivision applications. File Number SD 2019-02, Subdivide One, plus or minus 0.41-acre parcel from the titled area. Whenever you're ready.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this application, subdivision 2019-002, is to subdivide one, plus or minus 0.41-acre parcel from the titled land, northwest of the ninth, 23, 23, west of the fourth. It is accessed from Range Road 234, and it's approximately 8.2 kilometers east of Namake. So I'm just going to scoot that map up for you guys. Right there. So that is the location. It is staff recommendation that the Municipal Planning Commission choose option one to approve subdivision application SD 2019-002, with the conditions noted in Appendix A. So the intent of the application is to subdivide one, plus or minus 0.41-acre parcel of five-meter strip from the subject land as part of the 2005 agreement between the landowners, Western Irrigation District, and Wheatland County for their Hammer Hill Road reconstruction project. This subdivision was previously approved in 2015 and was endorsed by the county. However, the endorsement expired before it could be registered at land titles, and it was past the point that council could get a one-year extension when it was discovered. If approved, the subdivided strip of land will be transferred to the WID and consolidated into the existing spillway. The landowner has been compensated by the county for this land. The remainder of the land will continue to be used for agricultural purposes. So I'll just pop that aerial map up there for you guys. So because it's outside of the CMRV area, it didn't require circulation to the board. The proposed subdivision aligns with the objectives and strategies of the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan. The subdivision is removing a negligible amount of land from the quarter section with the intent of consolidating it with the WID canal. There will be no agricultural land fragmentation impact, as the WID canal is existing and its primary function is to service agricultural lands. By consolidating the five-meter strip with the WID canal, widening it, the subdivision will help with current and future water supply and demand. So for the regional growth management strategy, the RGMS supports the development and maintenance of efficient and effective transportation systems. As this proposed subdivision is the direct result of a road widening, it aligns with the RGMS Transportation Infrastructure Section. Where the five-meter strip is going towards widening the WID canal, it also aligns with the water section, which speaks to prioritizing sustainable, long-term yield of ground and surface water. In the Municipal Development Plan, its water resource objectives and policies speak to protecting surface and groundwater in order to support the county's quality of life. This proposed subdivision is to be consolidated into the existing WID canal, which will allow ample space for the WID to perform any maintenance or upgrades to it. The agricultural objectives and policies speak to protecting the right to farm, preserving agricultural lands, and expanding and diversifying agricultural operations. Many agricultural operators in the county use the water supplied by the WID to irrigate their land. This proposed subdivision will widen an existing canal right-of-way, ensuring that WID has enough land to expand the canal if they need to in order to meet demand. For the land use bylaw, the parent parcel is currently zoned agricultural general. If it approved, the five-meter strip will be consolidated into the WID canal right-of-way, and the land use designation will be removed. The WID is not required to obtain permits from the county in order to develop their right-of-ways. The technical review. Because it's being consolidated into a right-of-way, there is no access required. Water and sanitary servicing are required, and we aren't recommending to take municipal reserve, specifically because the land to be subdivided is less than 0.8 hectares. Circulation was completed to all landowners within one mile of subject lands. No letters or comments were received. Was completed with external agencies, and there were no conditions, objections, or comments received or concerns. And internally, there were also no concerns. And then there is the actual plan there. And then the circulation map. So Appendix A, the two conditions that staff are recommending go onto the subdivision are that the subdivision is to be affected by a plan of survey, and that pursuant to Section 654-1d of the MGA, all outstanding taxes up to, including the year in which a subdivision is to be registered, shall be paid to the municipality. So MPC has two options for their consideration. That subdivision application SD 2019-002 be approved, with the conditions noted in Appendix A, based on the fact that the stated conditions of approval, the subdivision authority has determined that the proposed subdivision complies with the county's land use bylaw rules and regs and the MDP policies. And the subdivision authority is satisfied that the proposed subdivision, with the stated conditions, is suitable for the purpose for which the subdivision is intended, pursuant to Section 7 of the subdivision development regulations of the MGA. The second option is that the application SD 2019-002 be refused. Staff is recommending that MPC approve the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, this time, we have two options. Oh, go ahead.
This widening, is it to facilitate WID infrastructure? Or if we pass it on to them?
It's a trade, basically. So for the Hammer Hill Road, we had taken some of the WID canal in order to widen that road, and so in compensation, we agreed to purchase the five-meter strip of the landowner and then give it to WID.
So it's land that we used and traded?
Yeah.
Okay, we have two options in front of us. MPC's wishes.
I'll move that MPC approve subdivision application SD 2019-002, with the conditions noted in Appendix A of the planning report.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? That's carried. Then the most important one, the motion for adjournment. Mr. Wilson moves. All in favor? Thank you.